Reverend Linsky.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have six present.
Thank you. Uh, will the clerk please read the meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting, filing, and forwarding of a copy of the same to the official Borough newspapers, Home News Tribune, and Starlager Publishing Companies on February 20th, 2018. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed.
Thank you. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by a salute to our nation's flag. That will be led by Councilman Reverend Linsky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We made it.
We'll see if next time we can do that in like either harmony or a roundhouse kind of way. We'll get right into items for discussion. First is public discussion on marijuana.
May I speak to that, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I asked for this to be put on the agenda because at the beginning of the year, Mayor Steber asked me, because I have the Environmental Commission, I'm liaison, to speak to various stakeholders throughout the town because other towns are being proactive in passing ordinances to ban the sale of marijuana before the state makes recreational marijuana legal. So I have spoken to the police chief, the school board, I have a letter from the seniors, I've spoken to the Environmental Commission, also spoken to, gotten opinions from several people around town, but I wanted to do one more public hearing, so I'd love to hear from other people if you're here tonight and you want to get up and speak, or else feel free to email me at my Milltown Borough, it's Trina, Mayor, at Milltown Borough, T-Mayor, sorry, at MilltownBorough.org. Dot com, sorry. Anyway, you'll see it on the website. But also, I'm going to get all of this information put together because I have been asked by our Assemblyman, Joe Danielson, to bring all of the input that we've gotten here in town. He chairs the Assembly Oversight Reform and Federal Regulations Committee, and it's his task to come up with a policy regarding the recreational marijuana, and he is going around the state and doing a listening tour. And the listening tour closest to us is Saturday, April 14th, at Middlesex County College at 10:00 a.m. So if anyone from the public would like to go there and have, you know, ask questions, hear other people's opinions, it's open to everyone. But so what I would like to do is get as much input from the people of Milltown, and then I will go to the Listening Fair, and then hopefully we can put together an ordinance by the end of April.
Excellent. Any questions for the councilwoman? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next we have, I guess this is a resolution, 18-101, authorizing, authorization to execute a memo of understanding with Rutgers State University of New Jersey regarding Mill Pond Park rain garden demonstration site. And this is in regards to the grant.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had to put this on. I had reached out to Dr. Brupta. They applied for the 319H grant, and he kept me informed, and we are recipient of that grant. They will be doing all of the work excluding planting the plants. So they will be purchasing everything, all the materials, and doing it up until the point where the plants need to be planted. So we are looking for volunteers to do that portion. We will be hiring, they will be hiring a contractor to come in to excavate the soil. We just have to figure out where to put it. And then the rest is the soil, mulch, and this is on the left-hand side, well, if you go in by the parking lot, it's in the green area to the right. So it's a great opportunity for us. There is a lot of erosion occurring at Mill Pond Park, and this will be a good stormwater solution for that area.
Any questions for the councilwoman?
I'm just wondering, Councilman Reverend Linsky, calling in, just wondering if any monies that we spend on this, given that it's for Milltown Park, go to the matching portion that we can allocate for money from the county, or does that have to be specifically earmarked for monies that we're looking to match from the county?
It would not be applicable.
According to the clerk, it would not be applicable.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, Dorianne, I'm sorry, number five of the Milltown responsibilities, I know it's probably just minimal stuff, but what is, what maintenance do we have to maintain after the two-year period is finished?
After the two-year period, just make sure it's watered to keep it working, in case it's a drought season. Other than that, pretty much after the two-year period, it's pretty minimal.
Okay, it'll go by itself probably.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. Could you just give us a brief overview of what this project entails?
Okay, what occurred last year, they, I got approval to go ahead and have them survey it. They created the rain garden design, which I did email. I'm not sure if everybody received it. I can email it to you in detail. And what they do is, they, the Water Resources Association at Rutgers has been doing rain gardens for many years, and goes to municipalities and applies for grants so that they can install them. And basically what they do is they hire the contractor to come in, they excavate the soil. Generally, they take the soil, I'm sure they will be, because it's not the DPW staff. Then they bring in the soil and drop it in, then they put in some mulch, and then they have the volunteers to plant the plants in that area. And it's all done by Rutgers. And the volunteers will be the only, that'd be the last portion that would be required for the borough. And then if it's a drought season, you would want to be careful to make sure that it's being properly watered so that it takes, and then, you know, it'll be minimal maintenance in the future.
Okay, just another question. Why is it called a rain garden? What's the rain garden portion here?
The rain garden is, takes stormwater solution. When you have, you know, your rainwater coming off, it filtrates within proper ground, and it really helps with your water quality, and also it helps with proper solution for the stormwater to go someplace, as opposed to just running off, causing flash flooding, or just standing water within that area, which there seems to be a lot of at the Mill Pond Park.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Next item, Walk and Health Fair, April 21st, 2018.
Yes, the Walk and Health Fair is on April 21st, from 8:00, 9:00 a.m. to noon. We will have vendors come in at 8:30. St. Peter's University Hospital will provide free blood, sugar, and blood pressure screenings. We also will have the Milltown Chamber setting up a table, as well as having just an informational table for the municipal departments, so that the information is there about recycling, garbage, anything with utilities or recreation. And they'll be able to assist us, the Chamber members, you know, so that borough staff doesn't have to volunteer that day. In addition, we'll have door prizes. We're getting quite a few in from local businesses for the walking participants, and it starts at, it will start and end at the American Legion, and it's mapped out for a one-mile distance, or about a three-mile distance if you go with the full distance. You can do the short walk or the long walk, but we're also going to have a health fair. It's going to be held at the American Legion for JFK at the Pavilion.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Next we will go to miscellaneous engineering items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We have three items tonight to go over. They are as follows. The first, as requested at the last meeting, we did contact your Office of Emergency Management, Mike Marsinski, relative to the concerns with regard to the helicopter landing site at Bradford Field. I think you all may have a copy of Mr. Marsinski's memo. Basically, he's indicated after we described him that the poles will be generally on the right field, the left field side of the field, that his opinion is there's no issues with regard to that landing site. And basically, that's the end of our report, just to get back to you and advise.
Thank you.
Second is, we'd like to talk to you about the Wilson Avenue Drainage Project. You may remember this was a subject of DOT trust funds that we received three grants for, and we're running quickly with the design, it's moving along very well. Because it's phased and you have the money, we're going to try and get as much of the work done with the initial bid as we can. What, the, there is a concern about an easement or a right-of-way that's available for along the slope. You may remember, just to describe the project, it's Wilson Avenue, sort of phase two, three, and four, and we've done the first phase, although there are still punch-ist items, but now the intent is to finish the end of the road. And part of the analysis or process is to build a drainage system that collects the water from the end of Wilson Avenue and then conveys it down to the storm sewer in Janic Court. What happens now is the water infiltrates over the slope and eventually causes an icing condition, which I'm mostly aware of. So what we have to do is pipe, believe it or not, from Janic Court first up the hill towards the intersection, what used to be the Wilson Avenue, and then come up the hill. There is what looks to be a 10-foot right-of-way slash easement. It looks like it may have been reserved for water. We're trying to determine whether the water line's in there or not. If it turns out that there's insufficient time to get the easement, we'll work the Borough Attorney, and what we'll do is we'll put the job out, and that'll be a later phase. Because of the way these DOT grant funds work, is you have to get them done and awarded by a certain date. There's a possibility we can get an extension of time, which we'll try for, and that way if you get three or four months, we can work out all those right-of-way issues and then put the job out at one time. So I just want to get you to hear about this as time goes on. We're proceeding as fast as our little fingers can go to get it done, and hopefully we'll be able to go through and get the whole project out at one time. But if it's not, and we can't get the extension, it'll go out in pieces, which is certainly acceptable to DOT. So that's basically the story, and I think that with Councilwoman Kerber, we'd probably want to have a meeting with her department, go over with Ralph. I'd like him to see the plans, get his comments, and, Dorianne, I'll give you a call and schedule something when it's convenient for you and your department.
Okay, thank you.
Last on the list, we've contacted the contract for the public works facility and indicated that we'll be preparing necessary contracts for him to sign and move forward the project.
Any questions for the engineer?
Yes, I have one. I was wondering, I thought we had all of the plans for all three phases of the Wilson Avenue project completed, so was, is that not correct?
Well, no. What you did was, you submitted applications for grant funding, and they're on basically concept plans, but there's been no construction plan. This is what's in this roll right here now.
So phase one is complete, and this is part of phase two?
Phase two, three, and four, that's correct.
Oh, three and four, okay.
Any other?
I have the drawings with me, if you'd like to see them later.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will close engineering items. Audience comments. Please state your name and address in the microphone in the center of the room for the record. With that, I will open and, audience comments.
My name's Gordon Stanwyk, out of at 3 Dirch Drive. I've lived in the house for the last 19 years. Prior to that, I had inherited a pre-existing condition in the backyard where, due to the runoff from Wilson Avenue and Howard Street, my yard was essentially a storm sewer. Thanks to Mayor Steber and his existing counsel, I owe you a tremendous amount of thanks for avenues that you pursued to get the grants to make this become a reality for me to have my backyard back in one piece. I just can't thank yous enough, and I'd like to give an additional thanks to Mike McCollum because Mike and I go back a long time, probably 17 or 18 years, because that's how long I've been coming down here, trying to get some relief, and it took this administration, Mayor Steber, for it to come true. I can't thank yous enough.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, and Lupuska also, I apologize.
That's okay.
Just so many to thank, but I just, I can't thank yous enough.
Thank you, Mr. Stanwyk.
Thanks, Gordon.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close audience comments. We're going to adjourn for about five minutes before we start the regular meeting, so we'll be back in five. Ready? Good evening. The March 26th, 2018, regular meeting of the Milltown Borough Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call, roll?
Council President Dixon?
Present.
Councilman Farkas?
Here.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Present.
Councilman Legati?
Here.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Here.
Councilman Reverend Linsky?
There.
Mr. Mayor, we have six present.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding of this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting, filing, and forwarding of a copy of the same to the official Borough Newspapers, Home News Tribune, and Starlager Publishing Companies on February 20th, 2018. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed.
Please rise for a salute to our nation's flag, followed by a...
A moment of silence?
Yeah, a moment of silence first, then a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That never ceases to be interesting. Okay, first on the agenda will be public hearings, and tonight we have three. Scheduled for ordinances number, pardon, two. Scheduled for ordinances number 18-1456 and 18-1457. The ordinance has been published according to law. Copies have been made available to the public prior to this evening's meeting. I would ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or against the ordinance, when recognized, please clearly state your name and address in the microphone in the center of the room for the record. Will the clerk please read ordinance number 18-1456 by title?
An ordinance fixing the salary and wages for various positions of the Borough of Milltown and providing for the manner of payment thereof for the year 2018.
Okay, at now, this time, I will open the public hearing for the ordinance. Does anyone have anything they wish to say for or against? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the council for their consideration.
Move that this ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and published according to law.
On second?
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Dixon and seconded by Councilwoman Kerber. Will the clerk please call, roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Reverend Linsky?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Okay, next is the public hearing for ordinance number 18-1457. Will the clerk please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance fixing the salary and wages for the special projects coordinator of the Borough of Milltown and providing for the manner of payment thereof for the year 2018.
Okay, at this time, I will open the floor for the public hearing. Does anyone have anything they wish to say for or against this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public portion and ask the council for their consideration.
Move that this ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and published according to law.
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilman Reverend Linsky, that the revolus, the ordinance is, pardon me, adopted on second and final reading and published according to law. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a caveat to this ordinance in that the Borough Council would have, have to grant final approval to award this position to whomever the particular person is for the special projects coordinator, as well as finalize the salary attached thereto, and indicate when this position would be activated. You know, I don't want it to turn into a long-running or continually-running position, but rather utilize when and if necessary.
Would you like to address this?
That would be resolution, when you appoint the person.
That would fall under the resolution when the appointment would occur.
That's correct.
Sorry, I didn't want to be...
Okay.
That's correct.
Very good.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Oh, excuse me. Can I chime in here?
Sure.
What are the scheduled hours for this position?
I'm sorry?
What are the scheduled hours for this position?
I don't know. I'm not the person who designed this position. I assume it'll be, that would also be in the resolution when whoever the individual is appointed into that position.
Correct.
I would make that a caveat also, put in there.
Right. Well, the ordinance is being created, we're voting on an ordinance, and we don't know when the hours are going to be?
The ordinance is only creating the position at this time, with a salary. I mean, all of our, all of our ordinances, our salary ordinances are not designated with hours or anything in them.
But all the salary ordinances are not one, two, or three jobs?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
No.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
No.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Reverend Linsky?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, it's 3:3?
No.
Nope.
4:2.
Shocking. Oh, 4:2? Oh, yes, it is 4:2. Just kidding, I count wrong. I put it in the wrong thing, 4:2.
So moved. Okay, next on the agenda is comments from the audience on resolutions or bills and claims.
Sorry, excuse me. I heard you did the wrong one.
If you have any comments or questions, please use the microphone in the center of the room. Give your name and address from the record, for the record when recognized. Remember, comments and questions are limited to the resolutions and bills and claims listed on this evening's agenda. With that, I will open audience comments.
Phil Zembrana, 40 Van Lu Avenue. Can someone explain to me why we're doing a 2017 budget appropriation reserve transfer at this time?
We're putting money into sewer disposal because I have not received the final bill from New Brunswick yet. They do what is called a true-up, and I only have $80,000, so I'm waiting on that bill to come in. Also, we went over to a new requisition system where the department heads and employees enter requisitions online, and some of the requisitions were misclassified into wrong accounts. So in order to correct that, there is a grant that was charged. I need to replenish the money back into that grant. That is another transfer that's being done.
Okay. Yes, my next question would be, can you, can you give me some detail on Resolution 18099, the proposals for professional services?
That's not me. That is authorization for us to advertise for requests for proposals for three positions.
Three positions or three services?
It's, well, they're professional positions, so three services, three positions. And the scopes when we do advertise, sorry, I have them right here. It's architect, I know is one of them. MEP, which I wrote down what it stands for.
Mechanical electrical plumbing.
Thanks, guys. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineer, and a structural engineer.
Okay.
Those are the three professional positions we were told we would need for this project to move forward. So the resolution is not awarding it to anybody or appointing it, it's allowing for us to advertise for the need of those positions through a RFP process.
Okay, so, last meeting, we, I thought we approved the budget, not the budget, but the, the construction company?
Right.
That's going to be taking care of putting together this complex. 10.7 million so far? So far?
Yes. I think it was roughly, yeah.
Somewhere around there.
So usually, but we don't know at this point what the service is for the architect, the structural engineer, or the mechanical engineer is going to be. So would that be included in that 10.7 million, or would it be?
No, this is, these would be separate contracts.
This would be additional?
These are separate contracts, yes.
Is there, is there any sort of ceiling on that, or is it unknown at this point?
I don't have cost estimates for those positions. I'm sure when we, the specs are provided and written, that would have to be taken into consideration for those, for what an anticipated cost would be.
And what, what timeframe are we looking at to put out these RFPs, to review the RFPs, and to start the process rolling?
By law, an RFP has to be advertised for 20 days. The specifications, this authorizes us to create the specifications. So from here, if authorization is granted, the specifications would be developed, and once they're ready, they would go out to the papers for advertisement, and at a minimum, they stay in the paper for 20 days before opening.
Well, we don't know at this point whether the architect that we're going to hire is going to, going to use architectural plans that are already paid for, or it could be that this architect will come up with his own plans.
No, the, the plans are already made.
The design, the plans are designed.
Hold on, excuse me, one second. Will the engineer please speak to this?
As we discussed briefly at the last meeting, there are architectural plans, but this architect will do is really handle the construction management. Part of that, typically with architects, they sign the plans at the time that the building permit is submitted, so it's not, not anything out of ordinary. So we need the architect to go through and basically take the plans that were prepared, put his seal and sign them, and then submit them for building permits. In addition to manage the construction, our understanding and our recommendation is since it's really a building contract, that the architect take the lead. With him, they'll need a team at the MEP, which is a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineer. What they do is, there's a lot of specialty things on this project, basically with the heat and the floor is something that the MEP will handle. The structural engineer will review the structural part of the building, and that was done already, but you need a structural engineer for the construction phase, and the boroughs asked us to submit a proposal for our site work, which basically will handle the site work, but the architect will take the lead, is basically what will happen.
And, and the special projects coordinator that we just approved is going to be following these people around on a daily basis?
Well, usually what happens with a project like this, there's a position created called a clerk of the works, and what they do basically is they sort of monitor the schedule. There's all kinds of things that they can do, and when, you know, you have a part-time construction code official, it really helps in this particular case. So that's what he'll do, and, you know, you could hire our office or the architect to do that, but, you know, to have all these professionals there at one time makes it complicated. So what the clerk of the works does, he's a coordinator, you know, and depending on the clerk of the works that you select, they have different responsibilities and, you know, and basically what their expertise is. But really, what you want the clerk of the works to do is to push the project through as fast as can, because obviously time is where the issues come up. Sometimes there'll be a changed condition that occurs, and the clerk of the works will be there and pick that up, or there'll be a need for a shop drone reviewed in a certain amount of time, just to keep the project moving. And on a project like this, we've seen it used very effectively.
Okay. You did say, you did mention part-time official?
Well, your construction code officials are all part-time.
Okay.
That's where the complication comes in. You don't have a construction code official that works full-time, because they're part-time, they don't know what the hours are, it's usually a couple nights a week. So they're not able to go over to inspect the site all the time. So what happens is the clerk of the works should help to coordinate those officials. You have a plumbing subcode, you have a fire subcode, and you've got the basic building inspector. So there's, it's complicated, but there's a lot of folks that have to be brought in and managed.
Wouldn't you say, though, that it would make more sense to take someone who's a construction official, who's part-time, and make them full-time, rather than take somebody that's already like full-time and add a little bit more money to what they're already making, and they may not be qualified?
The selection of the person is really up to the mayor and council. It's a really, you know, obviously, I've seen folks that have expertise in construction do the job, I've seen folks that really don't have a lot of expertise, but what they do is have the ability to stay on the contractor, to keep them to a schedule that the contractor prepares, and is approved by the borough.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jerry, call 179 Clay Street. Councilmembers, hope everybody's well. I'd like some information on Resolution 18097. For emergency contact for contract with high energy?
That was for when the tree came down up, was it, the center?
It was Janic Center.
Janic Court.
Yeah, Councilman Reverend Linsky probably can go into detail. Janic Court, I'm sorry. And we had to hire an outside contractor to come in to repair the hole, the tree, the lines, all of that.
All right, this says storm repairs on Martyrs Lane.
It was corrected. No, it was corrected. I apologize. We did correct it.
All right, I just have a question regarding that then. We have our own electric utility and electric repair personnel and brand-new equipment for them, and I'm just wondering why we're spending $30,000 in this instance, and I'm sure there's more, because I'd like to ask that question, how much we spend on outside contractors and... How much we spend on outside contractors for this type of work that our individuals should be doing?
Well, the best I can offer, I have an explanation, is that we had a nor'easter. Our standard backup plan when we're short on personnel is that South River comes in and provides assistance. Unfortunately, they were dealing with the same nor'easter. So we had to rely on our outside services to come in and perform the repairs to get those residents back up and running with power.
To further answer your question, Mr. Capella, over the past three years, approximately $320,000 on outside contractors. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to be leaguer, but $320,000 is a lot of money to be spending when we have both the water utility with personnel and electric utility with personnel that are capable or are not capable of performing those duties when we have to call in every storm. I understand the storm is an extenuating circumstance. I'm here every storm. Okay? I work with emergency management, as you well know, you're there as well. But I just find it hard to believe that our personnel cannot perform these tasks. And everything that goes on here, even such as a water main break, we have to hire a contractor to repair it. Years ago, our personnel repaired the lines, the water mains. It just seems like now we just pick up the phone and again, it has to be paid for. Am I correct?
You are correct.
It has to be paid for, and we're paying people to perform that function. And I'm sure we're paying people to sit there on overtime to watch that function be performed by a contractor. That's my point.
Thank you.
May I speak to that, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, sure.
Mr. Capella, I had the same concern. And I actually spoke to Councilman Revulinski about it. And I was, I believe that during the nor'easter, we were shorthanded and, and one of the employees took a vacation afternoon. And my concern was that we didn't, we weren't working at full capacity when we were in a state of emergency. And I had concerns about that, too, that if we are having a nor'easter, we should not have people being out on vacation because that opens us up to $29,000 extra in costs. And maybe Councilman Revulinski can speak to that as well.
Yeah, happy to speak to it. You know, the situation occurred. Unfortunately, our director of utilities was out due to some medical issues, and I won't discuss further in case of sunshine law requirements, et cetera. But the issue has been pretty much remedied with addressing that throughout the utility department, stating that, you know, look, folks, we all know you have your personal passions or whatever it is that needs to be taken care of. But however, when we've got a state of emergency, all hands need to be readily available on deck, and we do what we can. Unfortunately, whether or not that was handled before this event, it did occur. I'd also like to comment on Mr. Capella's comment in just that, I, I don't think our utility department sits idly by and waits to pick up the call. We had around 20 water main breaks this year, and I believe we've only called in our emergency services contractor on two occasions. So sometimes it just becomes too much work for us to handle. As I said earlier, in this particular situation, our backup plan at South River instead of emergency services, unfortunately, they, their hands were tied on that. They were dealing with the same storm when we were. So we bite the bullet this time. It occurred. But we're working to address it for future operations and make sure it doesn't occur in the future.
Mr. Revulinski, thank you for your explanation, but I think you should check your facts and figures as to how many water mains were repaired by an outside contractor. And additionally, there needs to be a definition of essential personnel versus non-essential personnel, because if you look what Public Service did and JCPN, those individuals were working 16 hours on with 8 hours off, and they were not allowed to leave to go wherever they had to go respectively. So I just find, I just find a problem with it. And that's just my opinion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Capella. I agree with your essential personnel comment. I certainly do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, just a quick question. Has this ever happened before?
I'm sorry?
Has this ever happened before?
Calling outside contractors?
Calling electrical outside contractors.
Sure. Certainly.
When does that happen? In an emergency?
Well, when Sandy here, we had crews up here from Tennessee.
Yes.
And, and a couple crews.
Yes, I remember. I was partly responsible for that. I do know that. But this is a nor'easter. This is not a hurricane. So the point being, and I heard Councilman Revulinski, so what's the plan going forward? We just wait until the next nor'easter and then throw up our hands again? What's, what's being done? What, what's the plan to make sure that the taxpayers of this town don't incur lease costs when there's people in the utility department getting paid very good salaries to do, to do a job? What's being done?
I'm sure the...
Well, we addressed it for the other two nor'easters that occurred from this one. This one was on the Friday, two or three nor'easters ago. And since then, our utility department, I think, has responded pretty well to the majority of concerns and being able to address issues in town, making the repairs necessary. And we rely upon emergency contracts just for that reason. That's why we have them in place. It's an emergency. There's things that are beyond our control at the time. Unfortunately, this time it was due to short manpower and not due to the fact that we had multiple downed wires or downed primaries and secondaries in place. We're working to address that. But, you know, unless you want to beef up the utility department and say, we need more men capable and licensed to go up there on a regular basis and fix primaries and secondaries, this is the boat we're in. So occasionally, you need to rely on those contracts, but that's what they're there for.
Well, the only thing, Mr. Revulinski, is that, that three years ago, this council, well, not this council, some of the people are gone, decided to make a change from the management of the utility department. And I sat in those meetings and I was told that the person that you put in charge was going to handle this, was going to change the way the department operates, and was going to make it an efficient-running apartment, uh, department, excuse me. So the only thing that I see, the only thing that I see now is that it's a less efficient department.
If you'll allow me, I'm not going to comment to the specific person. And Mr. Bruder, I'm going to defer to you on that simply because of the sunshine laws and discussing personnel issues. But I think that the person who is currently in charge of our utility department is doing a fantastic job.
That's your opinion?
But things occur. And unfortunately, it occurred at a time when we were shorthanded. So I don't know how much we can divulge into this in open session, in spite of not trying to name names because of the sunshine law. But I think that's a fair enough justification for this discussion.
Fortunately, I'm new enough that I don't know the personnel. I don't know who the individual or individuals we're talking about. But it is correct that unless a rice notice has been issued, we're not allowed to discuss a particular employee, their performance, their criteria, their evaluation, things of that nature.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Next, we have the reports of standing committees and introduction of resolutions. A consent resolution has been prepared to cover the nine resolutions listed on this evening's agenda. Any member of the council would like any of those acted upon individually, individually, please give me the number and I will have it removed from the consent resolution. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 18093 and 18098.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 18099.
Any others?
18100, please.
Any others? Okay. With that, will the clerk please read the consent resolution? As a reminder to the council, this will be a consent resolution accepting numbers 18-093, 098, 099, and 100. With that, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting. And whereas the borough clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and borough council of the borough of Milltown County, Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the borough clerk be approved without the necessity of having individual resolutions read by the borough clerk.
Okay. You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilwoman Mayor, that the resolution is adopted. Is there, oh, there is no discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Will the clerk please read Resolution 18-093 by title, please?
A resolution of the borough council of the borough of Milltown granting permission to Milltown Little League and Joyce Kilmer Knights rec to sign at Michelin Field.
Okay. You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Farkas, seconded by Councilman Legati, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I ask that this resolution be pulled simply because I'm a little confused here by the fact. Earlier this year, we talked about putting lights in at Field 2 down at Gloria of Radisson Park. And now we're putting a sign up indicating that the Little League utilizes, as well as Joyce Kilmer Knights, Michelin Field. So I, I guess, I have no issue with the sign itself. I'm just curious as to who actually utilizes that field?
I guess that's a good question, and perhaps we could pose that to, I don't know, Councilman Farkas, would you have anything from that?
Well, I do, but I, I think Frank Bottalari is here from Little League who's in charge of that. So if everyone will indulge him, he can probably explain better.
Yes, sir. Both.
Frank Bottalari, 18 Janicourt. The question was, who utilizes Michelin?
Yes.
Is that the question? Milltown Little League and JK Knights, who is the, the middle school baseball team. That's who utilizes the field.
Are we currently accommodating both organizations to utilize that Field to its greatest ability? Making sure that, you know, schedules are coordinated and there's no overlap so that you guys are both getting the benefit of that facility?
The schedules for both, both baseball teams are done through the rec department, and we've had no issues with that whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Michelin is a grass infield, not a skin...
Yeah. It's, it's the largest baseball field we have in town. It's 60/90, so it's, it is a grass infield and for the older kids, it's played on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Will the clerk please read Resolution 18-098 by title, please?
Authorizing certain personnel actions, recreation, sack, and pool.
Okay. You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Farkas, seconded by Councilman Legati, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I requested this one be pulled simply because I know at the last meeting, we voted on multiple positions for sack and pool. And I'm just wondering why these ones are being added at this time or amended at this time?
Yes, I'm not, you want to?
No.
No, go ahead.
No, I just, I believe some people had left, and they're just replacements of people who had left.
Well, I also believe that there may be one or two on going out or are out on maternity, maternity leave.
Oh, yes, that is correct, yes.
Did you hear that, Councilman Revulinski?
Yeah, maternity leave and, and other folks leaving. I just want to make sure that our other ordinances flush that so we're not hiring more people than necessary. Simple.
Very good. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Will the clerk please read Resolution 18-099 by title, please?
Authorizing the borough clerks to prepare a request for proposals for professional services relating to the flood mitigation project, Department of Public Works, and Firehouse Complex, and to publicize the same.
Okay. You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilman Revulinski, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I under, I know that there was some discussion during audience comments on, on this particular resolution, but I, I think myself and the Milltown residents maybe need a little bit of education here, and I'll include myself in that. I struggled with ordinance 181457 on how I was going to vote for that ordinance. And I struggled because of this particular resolution. And I know Mr. McClellan gave some very good explanation to the resident that asked the questions. But I'm curious, though, is the architect in this resolution, the one that oversees everything, is, is, is that the person who's in charge? So that I understand better?
The architect is, on a building project like this, now, you know, you are the governing body. You can set whoever you want to manage the job. But generally, on a building contract, the architect is the lead professional.
Okay.
So he's the one who has a direct contact with the contractor. He manages the dollars. He makes the recommendations for payment and approval.
Okay. That was all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions?
So just to clarify, the architect becomes the lead as the representative for the borough of Milltown in this project, correct?
As I said, Councilman Revulinski, that, that really is your call. You're the governing body. What I'm trying to say is that that's generally how it's done. Now, what he'll do is he'll ask my office for issues on site work, and we'll certainly give that to him. And then, and basically, we'll be there working hand-in-hand with him regarding the site work. So as far as the MEP and the other contractor, the structural, the structural engineer, they generally are going to be reviewing shop drawings and things like that. So the architect will be the lead. We will provide him comments and guidance on the site work as the project proceeds. But that is your decision, not ours.
Okay. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?[1590.83]
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Will the clerk please read Resolution 18-100 by title, please?
Resolution increasing deferred school taxes.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Will that this resolution be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ravelinski, seconded by Council President Dixon, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I was just wondering, can you give an explanation as to what deferred school taxes are?
The increase, what happens and everything is being that the schools on a fiscal year budget, okay? They're on a July 1st through June 30th, and we are on a calendar. So, in essence, we actually collect their school taxes prior to them even being due to the school. This resolution is the formal matter in which the governing body defers the charge of local school district taxes to the operations of the borough, thereby creating a surplus or fund balance. It's an annual resolution that the borough passes and has no effect whatsoever on the Board of Education finances. But it should be noted that, in the future, if the school levy should decrease, the borough would then incur a charge to operations, and the reduction would be an adverse impact to operations of our fund balance.
So it's a little bit of a shell game, it's a little bit of a gamble?
I'm sorry?
It's a little bit of a gamble.
It is, but when was the last time you saw school taxes go down?
Have not. Just out of curiosity, what happens if you don't pass this? What would happen?
Then what happens if you don't pass it, this budget would have to be amended, because the budget that's being introduced tonight is concurrent with this resolution. The amount of money, I believe, is $250,000, is that correct, what's being deferred, and that's being used to balance this 2018 current fund budget. That $250,000 is going into fund balance, and we're utilizing, I forgot the number, forgive me. We're utilizing $861,500 of surplus from the 17th end of our calendar year. So that would have to be reduced by this $250,000 should the resolution not pass. And then, this budget probably would not be able to, definitely not to be introduced tonight, there'd have to be some things done.
Like, go back and redo the budget and look to where to cut?
That's up to council. It's been conversational, but as Council President Dixon will attest to, this budget is, in my opinion, I put it together, is very lean. The areas that are going up are obviously salary wages, which are contractual. The pension bill for the PFRS has gone up significantly. The reserve fund collected taxes have gone up again significantly because of the lien that is on Ford Avenue. They're unfortunately things that cannot be controlled. That's what's forcing the increase. Well, the OE accounts and everything are pretty much stable.
Okay, and then, just because I don't know, how much, what is the increase?
The increase for this...
From the 2017 budget to 2018 budget, the increase is 1.4 percent. So, the 2018 budget is exactly 1.4 percent higher, and that is primarily due to salaries, which are contractual, negotiated years ago. And as long as they're still in there, that's what brought it up. And the other items you mentioned.
Right.
So, I know we're not on the budget right now, but just if you could just answer questions, because I know people don't really understand. So what is 1.4 percent equal in dollars?
$148,000, I have it here. It is $143,899.67 difference with last year's budget. Increase over last year's budget.
I think that was the mayor's salary, wasn't it?
Yes, undoubtedly.
Close to it.
I'm sorry, folks.
That's okay.
And what does that cost to the homeowner with the average assessed value home?
Do you have that, Council President?
Hmm.
If not...
I have it, I have to look it up. What's it going up this year? It's about...
I think it's a hundred, I have about $167 a year, which I guess is...
Yes, I believe that's what it is.
How many tax points is that?
I'm sorry?
What's the tax point?
Tax point is $44,537.20. It went down from 17.
I'm sorry, what did you say the increase would be to the average property?
$163, uh, $167 per year.
Okay, anything else on this resolution?
Sorry, we got carried away, Mayor.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Okay, next we move to the report of the Department of Finance Administration and Planning, chaired by Council President Ronald Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A very short report tonight, it just that the budget will, 2018 budget will be introduced tonight, and a vote on it will be scheduled for the meeting on April 23rd. Because of state law, we have to wait so many days after it's introduced before we can vote on it. So it would not be the next meeting, it would be public comment and the vote scheduled for April 23rd. Not directly scheduled meeting, which is April 9th.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's my report.
You're still voting on it tonight, which is instruction.
Thank you.
Right, okay.
Next we will hear from the Department of Public Safety, chaired by Councilman Nicholas Legati.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No official report, Mr. Mayor, but just to comment, we had, I think, four nor'easters this year, and just so everyone knows, our Public Works Department does a wonderful job, but listen, I am the liaison to public safety, and I have to let everyone know that our police department and our fire department are also on call and are doing a very, very, very good job. The one particular pole that went down by, near my house on Janet and Center, I think, I know the fire department was there, helping out, making sure that the safety concerns for the immediate area were taken care of. They didn't leave the vicinity until everything was A-OK. You know, we can't forget that they're, you know, that they're out there doing what they do during our state of emergencies as well. But that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next we will hear from the Department of Utilities, chaired by Councilman Richard Ravelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make it short and sweet. The utility department, water department, has actually received the sample bottle for the next round of lead and copper sampling, and has notified the residents in the sampling pool that they'll be distributing those bottles and taking the samples, I believe, next week. Other than that, we are satisfied and thankful to the utility department and the rest of the Office of Emergency Management for being on call and responsive during the latest round of nor'easters. Hopefully, we're done with those in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we will hear from the Department of Public Works and Recycling, chaired by Councilwoman Dorianne Kerber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just want to let you know that on May 5th, 2018, we'll have the New Jersey Clean Communities Cleanup. It's scheduled for that day. Information will be posted around town sometime this week. In addition, the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority is coordinating a two-hour training session, which will be held at Midaslokes County Police Training Center for implementing a StreetSmart pedestrian safety campaign in your community. I will be attending that training session and have registered for the StreetSmart campaign that we're going to be doing, and that's scheduled on April 10th. That information will be also distributed the next day or so. In addition, I participated in the Urban and Community Forestry Program stewardship grant webinar, and I'm looking forward to applying for that grant. I will make sure that's on for the next meeting. We do qualify, and the whole thing in the past was, if you're a shade tree commission, you get more points, but if you get everything listed in there, it's worth trying, so that's what I'm trying to do. For tree plantings, anything related to shade tree, and education as well. And then I already spoke about the Health and Walk Fair, and that concludes everything.
Thank you. Next we will hear from the Department of Environmental, Health, and Social Services, chaired by Councilwoman Trina Mayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next environmental commission meeting is this Wednesday. We've invited our borough engineer, Mr. McClellan, to attend the meeting. He is not able to attend this Wednesday, but we will invite him to speak to us and learn more about steep slopes than I thought I could ever learn on April 25th. So, we're looking forward to that, because we've had some discrepancies, so we would like to clear it up, especially with certain building projects coming along. I'd also like to inform the public that Assemblyman Danielson's Job Fair is coming up. That will be Wednesday, April 18th, from 3:00 to 7:00 at the Imperia in Somerset. There's flyers here in Borough Hall, and we'll make sure that one gets put on the website. Oh, there is? Okay.
It was posted TV.
Oh, great, all right, great. Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next we will hear from the Department of Recreation, chaired by Councilman Randy Farkas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just another reminder. Join us on Monday, April 16th, 2018, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at the Milltown Municipal Building, Courtroom, 39 Washington Avenue in Milltown, for a program on protecting your family from alcohol and opiate addiction. And this program is hosted by the Milltown Municipal Alliance and the Milltown Board of Health. It's presented by a gentleman named John Krieger of Krieger Consulting, Incorporated. This highly acclaimed, engaging session offers the most up-to-date information available today on behavioral trends focusing on the three primary issues facing parents and professionals: alcohol, opiates, and marijuana extractions. Learn current information on these three high-risk behaviors, how this is initiated, used, and how they are drastically changing their risk potential for every individual, family, and community. See how these products are being modified, intensified, and used. Hear how alcohol, opiates, and marijuana are being bought over the internet, and some of the tutorials available on use. Learn how alcohol is being smoked, and marijuana is being used in schools without detection. Discover the risks, the sources of information, and what every parent, professional, school, and community is up against. Methods for dealing with these challenges will be explored. This workshop is one of the most enlightening, edutaining, and informative programs you will ever see. Get answers to the questions you have always wanted to ask. Again, this is hosted by the Milltown Municipal Alliance and the Milltown Board of Health, and this is provided for funding through the Government's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. And just a final note, this program is not intended for individuals under the age of 18.
Councilman, can you give the date and time again, please?
Certainly. It is April 16th, 2018, 7:00 to 8:30 PM, here, in the courtroom.
Can we have that all on the internet and website, etc.?
I think it's on the website, right? It's got on there. Facebook, everywhere. I think it's on some page of the website.
I think there's going to be some flyers around town, and there'll be flyers out here, and we're gonna...
If it's not on the website, we'll get it on.
Yeah, we'll get it up there.
I'm pretty sure it's on the homepage.
Excellent. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
It is, it's on the homepage, right? It's the second event posted. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is introduction of ordinances. Tonight we have two. Will the clerk please read ordinance number 18-1458 by title?
An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinance to the Borough of Milltown, more particularly, Chapter 26, sewer, to amend sewer rates.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this ordinance. What is your pleasure?
Will that this ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled council meeting, which is scheduled for April 9th?
Back in.
Okay, I have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilman Ravelinski, that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled council meeting, April 9th, 2018, 7:00 PM at Borough Hall. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I am, I'm on the Finance Committee, and I spoke to, actually, Mr. Ravelinski about this today. We met, have been meeting since January. We met three or four times to discuss the water and sewer rates, and the business administrator and I have notes on our meetings, and we left the meeting, which was two weeks ago, with our final numbers on the water and sewer rates, which I wasn't happy about, but, you know, that was what we agreed on, that we needed to do. And when I opened my packet over the weekend, there was a totally different number on the sewer rate. So, the business administrator sent out the numbers that we agreed on to put in the packet, and I did not receive any email from anyone that the numbers were incorrect, and I was informed this morning by Mr. Ravelinski that perhaps our math was mistaken. And, I mean, I have a problem with this to begin with, but now the number for the sewer rate minimum is much higher than we even had agreed on. And I look back at my notes, Mr. Councilman Ravelinski, and I don't have that number anywhere.
Well, I'll respond to it, obviously. The rate increase comes from the fact that we are now including your first 7,500 gallons of usage in your minimum bill, similar to the way the water is. Now, this is an item that we discussed, and perhaps, I know we threw a lot of numbers around that meeting, and perhaps what was written down was, didn't include that, you know, minimum usage of 7,500 gallons, but when you add that in, as we discussed, that's what the end result is. So, I know that Mr. Stankiewicz actually notified Denise immediately afterwards, after receiving it, and let her know that the number was incorrect that she utilized, which is why we have the amendment here. I think these were done quickly. It was around the time of the phone, or, I'm sorry, rather, snowfall. So, you know, phone calls were made, emails weren't actually sent out, and I apologize for not keeping you closer in the loop on this one to address it, but I think our conversation this morning spelled out pretty clearly what these, what these numbers represent, and the intent of the Finance Department moving forward with amending these rates for the water and sewer ordinances, so that they are pretty much mirror images of each other, and that both include your standard usage up to 7,500 gallons and your minimum rate, and then the tiers also match at the same usage level.
Denise, is that what you had?
The number I had was the number that you had, and I received a phone call from the Order of Last Week telling me that my number was incorrect.
Right.
And that I needed to change it.
So, Ron, do you recall, or, excuse me, Council President Dixon, do you recall?
I remember both numbers being kicked out in the Finance Meetings, and I remember, and it's what I wrote down, that we agreed on the higher number because of what Councilman Ravelinski informed us of, and what Mr. Stankiewicz informed us of, and I've spoken with him today, and he also had the higher number as his, and I don't want to speak for the man, but he said that's the number he had, not the lower number.
So, and if you recall or recall, we had quite a debate about even the lower number being a hardship to people, and now, with that higher number, which is the minimum that we're voting on, is, what is it, 100 and...
10467.
467.
Right, right. So that is 85 percent higher than the minimum is today.
Right, but that 85 percent also includes your usage, which your previous minimum bill did not include.
Correct.
So if you used 7,000 gallons, you were being billed for 7,000 gallons of sewage as well at the, at the previous rate, in addition to your minimum. So now, we've just made the minimum to include your minimum usage. So you have your connection fee, basically, as well as your minimum usage up to 7,500 gallons, your first 7,500 gallons of the quarter, which mirrors what we have. So it's not just an 85 percent increase, it's, you're getting more for your minimum quarterly amount here, because it includes your initial usage. So unless you have an abandoned home in town, you're paying more than minimum usage quarterly for sewer. So that's why it appears to be such a more significant jump. And I don't want to be quick about this. Look, it's hard on everyone. The last thing we want to do is have to raise rates on anyone in the borough, but, you know, we've got a budget shortfall here of $300,000, and it's from the Water and Sewer Fund. And if these funds aren't made whole, and the ship isn't righted to sail into the future, then it's just going to get worse for us. So if we want to keep, continue providing the services to our residents that they need, and, you know, budget for future improvements to the system to remedy our shortfall, then unfortunately, this is the step we have to take. As the mayor said many times, we can't kick the can down the road. And, look, I don't want to pay the increase either, I'm a rate payer too, but unfortunately, these are the steps we have to take. But at least this 10467 does include your minimum 7,500 gallons, so it wasn't just an 85 percent increase with nothing to gain for it.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had a 10 percent increase last year, and at that time, you said, you said that that 10 percent increase was going to right the ship last year. Well, what happened? We get torpedoed somewhere?
We had, force main break, Councilman Farkas, that chewed up the anticipated revenue from that 10 percent increase, in the tune of about $150,000 accumulated over two billing quarters. And so, when you chew up your $150,000 from a 10 percent rate increase, and you still haven't paid off what you owe, you have no choice but to raise them again, because no one anticipated that force main breaking, no one's budgeted for replacing that force main, and quite frankly, you know, when these things occur, we can't go to our insurance company and say, hey, pay us for it. It's just not the way it works.
Well, throwing up your hands and saying, well, no one planned for it, that's not the answer, because this is, this is overall a generic 30 percent increase, except for the minimum, which is an 85 percent increase over the existing cost.
It's not, it's not, first of all, it's not an 85 percent increase. If you add your minimum, if you include the current rate at $3 and change for the first 7,500 gallons, and you include that into your minimum bill, you get around $73. Add 30 percent onto that, and I want to restrain here from using percentages, because it's not a matter of percent. The percent increase is not what we desired. What we need is to raise $300,000. So the end result of raising $300,000 over two quarters is, in fact, a 30 percent increase. If we had an entire year to raise it, would it be 15 percent? Most likely, but unfortunately, this is the case we're in. And we're going to revisit these rates every year and determine what our needs are and where we stand financially. But, you know, when you don't have money set aside because of a failure to plan all these years along, and to set aside revenue and chewing away your surplus because you never raised rates as rates were raised to us by the City of New Brunswick, then you have no surplus to rely upon when you have a force main break. So when you're raising 10 percent, and the force main breaks, and that costs you your 10 percent, you have no choice but to raise the rates again. Nothing anyone wants to do, but to do right by the citizens of this borough, unfortunately, we need to raise the rates, because we can't go on the rates that we're standing and not provide improvement and... and expect that the old rates are just going to cover us somehow. You know, that's how you go bankrupt.
Okay, well, let me just say, it's unconscionable, unconscionable, to raise these rates 30%. There are senior citizens in this town on fixed incomes who are going to have to choose between eating or medicine and paying this bill. And there was a nice couple here last week, oh, no, I'm sorry, they were here water. I'll address that in the water. It's unconscionable to raise these rates 30% because of a lack of planning. Now, are you telling me that New Brunswick raised our rates 30%?
We haven't raised our water rates in years.
That's not what I asked.
From $100,000 to over $1 million in billing from the city of New Brunswick. And we refuse to raise our water rate. Now, what I'd like to propose is that in the future, any rate increase that we receive from the city of New Brunswick will be immediately reflected in our rate changes so that it takes the politics out of it. Because it's not inconscionable. It's undesirable. It's a hardship. That's true. But the fact of the matter is, if we don't fill this budget hole, we'll be looking at no improvement. Not your light for parks, not road improvements, not water main improvements or anything else. We don't have the money. And the only place to get it is unfortunately, through the rates that supply the funds for those projects.
Or maybe you don't spend so much.
Well, find a way to solve it.
How much, just out of curiosity, how much money was used from the water surplus for this project across the street?
I think it's 15% is being charged to water.
Dollar amount?
I have to get a calculator. Well, 10 is about 1.5, another so, what, 2.2 maybe? Does that sound about right? 15 million?
I would call that the Electric and Water Department are responsible for about 60% of the cost for across the street to move our DPW facility out of a flood zone. That's the portion of, the municipal portion of the project that is relied upon for watering water.
250,000.
Over the 20 years?
Give or take.
And then divided by 20 is how much?
112,500.
So, 112,500 did not go for the sewer main break and did not go for anything. It went for a project across the street. You took money out of the surplus, that money that should have been reserved for doing repairs to build a project across the street.
There's no, there's no, there's no choice but to build the project across the street. This all, look, this all plays into kicking the can down the road.
Excuse me, Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
The mayor is really speaking. We're discussing this. He's supposed to be running the meeting, correct? He doesn't really get an opinion?
He does get an opinion.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
But that's not applicable in New Jersey.
I want to speak.
Municipal form of government.
I don't think anybody...
He did it.
We did?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before the clerk calls the roll, if I may say one thing.
You may.
As head of the Finance. Since 2010, expenditures for treatment of water and sewer purchased from New Brunswick have increased from 675,000 to $1,242,000, an increase of $567,000. And there has never been an appropriate rate increase sufficient enough to absorb this added cost. Other expenditures, which include salaries, health benefits, insurance, water and sewer main break repair, have increased from $863,903 to $1,359,761, again, without an appropriate rate increase sufficient enough to absorb this added cost. Those two added together total $1,926,761, or close to $2 million, since 2010, when we have never raised the rates. There's reasons the rates were not raised that are in a confidential agreement between us and New Brunswick, and I'd have to talk with our attorney if we're allowed to release any of that information. But we were part of that negotiations and I do know that we are not to disclose that. We were asked not to disclose that. So, I'm not disclosing that for reasons being. The fund balance utilization as revenue, which is not always a guarantee, has decreased from $796,651.73 in 2017 to $500,000 in 2018. The balance available as of December 31st, 2017, was $502,517.37, was lower than it was available on December 31st of 2016, which was $951,578.31. There was a rate increase effective for the latter part of 2017 of 10%, which Councilman Farkas referred to. It was designed to provide somewhat of a payout for 2018. However, there was a decrease in consumption in 2017 that impacted the fund balance as of December 31st, 2017, and also caused reserve limitation in 2018. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And also, we built a $14 or $15 million electrical substation too, that we're paying for. And think of the miles of relining and water line replacement. Don't forget, we just had a woman here at the last meeting stand at that microphone and say, "I'm washing my baby in brown water. What are you going to do about it?" What are we going to do about it?
We're going to raise our rates.
We're going to raise the rates and we're going to fix the pipes and we're going to have clean water for our people. That's what we're going to do. And we're going to pay our bills. Because what do we have? About a half a million dollars in people not paying their bills?
Damn close to it.
And then when you go to shut them off, they come in with a check and pay the whole darn thing? I think maybe people should stop playing games.
Or they tell them to pay their taxes ahead of time to get a discount. They come in with the total tax amount and still haven't paid their bills.
Yeah, yeah. They owe $3,000 in water sewer, but they can come up with 12 grand to pay their taxes ahead of time.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
It's not a joke.
May I? Yes, sir. Not to be very combative, but just to respectfully maybe just disagree with just one of the statements that Council President Dixon just mentioned. He spewed out a lot of numbers to you. Some people could follow them, some people can't. I certainly can't follow all of them. I was on the Finance Committee last year. There was a 10% increase in your water and sewer rate and it was sold to the Milltown public for the main fact that their rates haven't been raised since 2010. I find it very difficult for you to try and sell that again this year for the reason, some of the reason that your rates are going up. You sold that to the Milltown public last year and they had to eat it. They ate it. They're paying their bills. Their rates went up. Don't use it in this year because it really shouldn't factor in, you know, as the main reason why. And keep using, "We haven't raised them since 2010." We sold that to the Milltown people last year. They bought it. They're paying their bills. You know, don't use that as the reason for this year's 30% or whatever it is. That's the only contradiction to his numbers that I have, you know. Please, let's, you know, don't keep using that. Keep making people pay, think they're paying for the same thing over and over again. They did it last year. Don't use it again this year.
Anyone else?
Councilman Legati, respectfully, I appreciate you pointing that out. I truly do. Because you're right and I agree with you. But the one thing that we're failing to identify here that people need to be aware of is, we had some emergency service issues last year that chewed up that increase. That increase that was intended to right the ship was chewed up by...
I said I was only disagreeing with one of his points.
So, we've got no choice but to double down on it again. It's unfortunate and I thank you for that because I agree with you 100% that we can't use the same excuse year after year. And hopefully, after this, we won't have to use this excuse anymore. And this does set us on the right path, but only the Lord knows what the future holds. So, thank you for, thank you for your comment.
Mr. Mayor, I've been on the Finance Committee and I'd just like to make one more comment to your point about the young couple that was here that has the brown water. This increase, and we've gone back and forth on it a lot, just gets us out of the hole. It doesn't allow us to do any of those improvements which really need to be done. And that has part of been our debate within the Finance Committee is that when you're in the hole, if you have to sort of tighten your belt and be careful with your money, not spend more. And this is really just getting us out of the hole. And so, I, when you say you hope it doesn't get worse, if we're just always trying to scratch to keep our head above water, this isn't going to help us, even though it's a big increase and it will be a hardship on a lot of the citizens. So, a lot of the figures in the water and sewer budget go to debt that we've incurred. And we get, we continue to borrow and borrow and borrow and do another bond ordinance. And so, my pitch was that we have to be careful. I, you know, I have a hard time seeing this and I will say that I'll have to vote against it because I wasn't given the correct numbers. And I don't feel, I'm new on the council and I don't feel comfortable putting that onus. I know that we have a debt to, a $300,000 shortfall and we have to cover it. However, I encourage that we look for any ways within the rest of the budget to not put it on the citizens. And you know, there's always, you know, individuals can go bankrupt, businesses can go bankrupt, but when it happens in a town, it comes back to you people to pay for what we haven't done over the years. And I can't speak to it because I haven't been here, but to sit here and we've said, "Well, you know, it's New Brunswick's fault. They've been raising our rates since 2010." Well, why wasn't it increased a little bit every year? Why wait until some poor senior citizen has to see on what was a $200 bill is now going to be a $260 bill?
Well, the reason it isn't raised is because anytime you try to raise anything, it's unconscionable and everyone's going to die. Okay?
I don't think that's the case.
Now, look, this is very simple.
But again, Mayor, raise the rates.
If you look at the way they do things in Milltown.
It's the in and out. So, you can't have everything going out and nothing coming in. I totally get, I fully understand that, but you can't, it can't be an all or nothing.
Right. Here's the thing. I think everybody on the council should make a decision today and everybody who runs for office from now on should also make that decision today. There's two ways to finance government, okay? There's either, you finance it when you have the problem, which is what Milltown has done since 1896. You raise it when you, it's the last thing in the world to do. Then you raise a rate. Then you raise the taxes. Or, you put your increases on a trajectory that you can kind of guesstimate over long term. Now, how many councils have done that in 120 years? Zero. And it's not going to get corrected this year, but if it gets right in the minds of the people who occupy this desk, it can be.
Well, you've been here longer than all of us.
I sure have.
What's the reason?
It falls on deaf ears. It falls on deaf ears. I've always said, you got to make, you have to make improvements at an affordable rate. That's called trajectory, okay? Not reactionary accounting.
Correct.
This is what people have chose, who have sat at these tables, to do. So, again, go out to the little plaques out there and look at the names. They're the guilty ones.
But again, they, so, no more money has come in, but nobody stopped the spending going out.
Unfortunately, the spending that's been going out has things that have to be done because no one ever did them before. They never maintained the water lines. They never maintained the sewer lines. They never maintained the electric lines. Up until last year, we didn't know how many utility poles we owned or whose wires were on what.
Right.
We're finally getting there. So, it's starting to come around. People are starting to learn. They're starting to get it. I'm proud of members of this council who have actually done things correctly like that. Okay?
Right, but...
And it's great. It's a wonderful thing. It's just that you have to decide. You can't have it both ways. Either you put your spending and you project it out and you go 20 years and Denise, how many times, how many years have I been saying that to you?
The plan?
Yeah.
Well, it's funny you say that.
The plan that never happens.
Well, because we do have a plan. We have a plan. We have, I haven't, Mr. McClellan was nice enough to give it to me. We have a plan. The problem is, we haven't followed that plan. So, I mean, we have a capital and plan and that's what I've been saying in the budget meetings all along, that we have this capital plan and if we would put some aside for each project, that would make sense. That's exactly what you're talking about.
Right, but the problem is, is you have to get money to put there and therein lies the problem. Because listen, not only are we doing these things tonight, right, with the rates, then we're going to the budget. And wait till you see that one.
Well, I have. And fortunately, I've been privy to that. So, yeah, I understand that.
So, this is where the decision-making comes in.
Exactly. The decision, but there's everybody. It's like your kids. Everybody wants something, but sometimes you have to say, "No, you can't get it this year. You're going to have to wait till next year or two years from now or three years."
This is why people hate politicians. Because we raise your taxes and tell you we have to do stuff and unfortunately, you know, we're only as good as our words. These are the tough decisions and this is why no one wants the job. So, I hope everyone can agree here that we're headed in the right direction and we got to take these necessary steps, how uncomfortable or unpalatable they may be. They've put Milltown in the right direction moving forward and it's the best opportunity we have for a stable financial future, rather than chopping our legs out again and trying to dig out of a hole next year.
I'm not comfortable that these numbers are going to do it for next year.
Well, my water bill in the summer quarter is $1,000. I have sprinklers. I have a pool, whatever the case may be. That means that my summer bill is going to be between $1,300 and $1,400. I don't think I can do that to the Milltown public and seniors alone. So, I think we need to bang our heads together to figure something else out because I think that this increase is a little bit too high for the backs of Milltown residents. And that's my opinion.
And historically, we haven't raised the minimum because we gave people a chance to cut down a little bit. But if the minimum is raised, then they, that's right off the bat. You have no other choice but to pay the extra. It's not, you can't, you can knock down your sprinkler use. You can shower at the gym.
Well, keep in mind that in the past, every time we've raised our rate, consumption has gone down.
Exactly.
The anticipated revenue that we were to generate was never realized because everyone dropped their usage. So, by increasing the rate for your minimum amount to include your first 7,500 gallons, we're guaranteeing our budget and financing for the future, saying that we know every account, every user of our water and sewer system is going to be paying for that first 7,500 gallons, which in the past, we haven't had. And that allows us to further stabilize our budget and say, "We know this money's coming in." And if it's not going to come in and everyone drops their usage down, we may be in the same boat next year. But I'm hopeful and I'm pretty confident in the way that we ran these numbers over a two billing cycle analysis, that the money will be generated to pay off that debt and hopefully, put us in a good position next year. It's not what we want. I certainly don't want it. I don't think any member of council wants this, but it's a tough decision that has to be made. And we won't know until next year when the budget comes in and we start looking at it again and say, "Hey, we did it. We got out of the hole." And what do you know? We've got another $100,000 in surplus where we can start doing projects.
But you don't...
To improve the town. But if we don't try, we're going to get nowhere.
No, I understand.
And that's all I'm asking. You know, everyone's got to just suck it up here and say, "It stinks, but it needs to be done." And you know what? Next year, if we can reevaluate again and say, "Hey, oh my God, we made 10 times as much as we needed," which I don't believe will be the case, but we can, we can look at lowering the rate. Or, we may fall short again because people use less and less and less. I know I've shut my sprinklers off. I removed the pool that was in my yard because of my first $1,000 summer bill. And you know, it's the hardships that we all make in order to live in this great community. So, I'm personally asking everyone here on council to get behind this and try. It's not for political gain. It's not for anything else. No one wants to do this, but let's just work together and move Milltown in the right direction. And I think that's why we're all here. That's it for me.
All right.
Thank you.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
No.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
No.
Councilwoman Mayor?
No.
Councilman Revolinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have 3-3. What is your vote?
Mr. Attorney, is this something on which I can break a tie?
Yes, it is.
My vote is for the affirmative.
Okay, that makes it 4-3. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the introduction of Resolution 18-1459. Will the clerk please read that ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the borough of Milltown, more particularly, Chapter 25, to amend water rates and add charge for final reading.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this ordinance. What is your pleasure?
Move that this ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled council meeting, which
and that a public hearing be held at our next regular council meeting on April 9th, 7:00 PM in council chambers.
May I get a second?
I second.
I have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber, that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law and that a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled meeting, April 9th, 2018, 7:00 PM at Borough Hall. Is there any discussion or should we just take what you just said?
Yep.
Put it right into there and...
Yep.
Well, no, no, actually, I'd just like to clarify. So this, the water rates, 30% increase also?
Correct.
Okay. So let me just ask from a homeowner's perspective, what are they getting for the 30%? What is a homeowner getting for a 30% increase? I mean, I know they're getting lead in their water.
Well, that's another expense that we're...
No, no, don't go spreading that rumor now.
But I, I mean, every homeowner has to be, that's watching this, has to be asking that question. What are we getting for a 30% increase?
The ability to get ourselves out of a hole and plan for future projects, projects that have been on the books for years but never addressed because we didn't have the money to do so. Projects that are going to bring us into the future and allow us to provide better services to our residents, the people who matter.
Okay, the only problem is, I keep on, I keep on hearing the same story over and over, but seven, seven years ago, there was a problem with the substation. Our substation got flooded. But everybody walks out of the building, look left, look what's sitting up there. Do you know how much that cost? Nothing. There was no rate increase for that substation. We figured out a way to do it at no cost, at no rate increase to the residents. So don't, don't say that it can't be done, it can be done.
When did we increase rates 70% for electric? What year was it instituted that we increased the electric rate 70% in order to pay for future improvements?
In 2013.
Shortfall in our budget that we need. What year was that, that we raised it 70% on the electric rate?
10 years.
These are unnecessary evil, or I'm sorry, necessary evils or unfortunate circumstances that we are in. We don't have Walmart, we don't have big facilities in town that are giving us tons of tax revenue because we're a residential community. We don't have anywhere else to go for the money. And if we want to continue to make this a community, a great community, we have very little options here but to put it on the back of the taxpayers. I don't like doing it, I hate doing it, but unfortunately, it's the only place we can go right now. And unless we want the same old, same old and kick the can further down the road, this is what we have to do. You want trees removed, this is where the money comes from. You want to improve your water mains, this is where the money comes from. You want better roads, this is where the money comes from. It's not coming from anywhere else. And the people in this town pay a lot in taxes and you know what, this is going to cost them a little bit more, but it's still going to be the greatest town in the land and it's still going to be the place where I raise my kids. And I'm sorry for going off on a little bit of a tangent here, but folks, I'm passionate about this. I don't want to do it, no one up here wants to do it, but we need to do it or else we're broke and we don't have the money to do those improvements, to give you the quality of life you deserve to live in this town. I, I'm going to stop talking because I'm getting a little upset here. Personally, I just, we got to get behind this, folks, and stop dickering and just do what is right, set us on the right path. It stinks that comes in an election here for people, but it is what it is. And next year, hopefully, we don't have to raise it at all. Who knows? But at least we're doing our best to set ourselves on the right course.
Thank you, Councilman.
May I make a comment to Mr., to Councilman Revulinski? I've told him that I feel badly because of the hole that we've dug ourselves, that we aren't able to do some other really good ideas. I know Councilman Revulinski had an excellent presentation about getting new water and sewer meters that would actually let people check on, pay online, check their app, see their usage, bring us, bring Milltown more into the future and be aware of it. Unfortunately, because of the deficit that we're running, we couldn't in good conscience add the cost of that as well as increasing the rates. So things that would bring us into the future, because we are in the situation that we're in, we can't even begin to think about doing that. So, you know, these increases are just getting us out of the hole. We can't even look to do other things. And I've talked to the mayor about this. There's things that we can't even begin to look at because we have so many other things that we just need to get to keep our head above water.
Councilwoman, if I may, let's just take a second and think back that if our predecessors who sat up here didn't build an electric substation or a public works facility 10 feet from a brook, okay, if they put it on high land and the Borough of Milltown never had to deal with, with building those facilities, okay, in modern times, look at the costs, it's crazy, okay? The problem is, is there was no forethought years ago. We found a piece of land, let's put our electric substation there. It used to be high and dry up on North Main Street. Somebody thought it was a great idea to put it down by the brook. Public Works Building, I don't know where it ever was before it was back here, I apologize. I'm usually pretty good with my Milltown history. It could have been the old, I think that was the Rescue Squad at the time. The museum?
Museum.
Okay, was the old Public Works Building behind the firehouse on, on South Main Street, okay? So right now, we're doing projects that should have been done 60, 70 years ago somewhere else, but we are the ones who are bound to have to take care of these problems now.
I understand that.
And it, look, and it's not a bad reflection on you or Councilman Legati or Councilman Farkas or anybody sitting up here.
I, I understand.
It's not, it's not, these are the people who are solving it now and it's unfortunate, but I agree with you 100%. In order for us to do these things, you have to have some money to do it. And look, after these, these votes are all done tonight and everybody who, who voted no, I'm hoping when they come back for the second reading, they have answers.
Right.
I mean, please, somebody find an answer.
I'll vote.
If you can come in here and find a way that we can do these things, I'll support it, 100%, but I can't find it.
Obviously, I, I'm with you. I want things done as well as possible for the people of Milltown. Here's a capital plan that somebody drew up in 2010. So if you have a capital plan and you have, okay, in 2010, you do this, 2011, look at all the blank spaces that nothing's been done.
Well, the priorities unfortunately changed due to things that come up.
Right.
You know, all of a sudden, water lines are the hot ticket item. You know, years ago...
Well, if they were done proactively, they wouldn't be.
Right. The electric substation got flooded. The idea was, let's do the substation. Then all of a sudden, it turned to a firehouse. So a couple of years, they were focused in on a firehouse, then it turned back to the electric substation and that happened. So it's, the plans are there.
Right, but if you have a plan, regardless of what party affiliation anyone comes in or who's coming in and out, if you stick to a plan, then you're going to get your work done correctly and in a, in a timely fashion.
Absolutely.
Not, oh, Eric Steber, he wants to do, he wants to do trees, but Nick Legati wants to do something else. Here's your plan, it's provided by the engineers of the Borough of Milltown and it prioritizes things and for some reason, we haven't followed this plan. And that puts us in the situation that we are, that if we wanted to follow this plan today, we don't have the money to do it because we've spent on who knows what else. You know, we're like a bunch of squirrels up here and if you see a nut that falls down on the ground, we're all running for it and who's going to get it first and then whoever gets it, they get their project done and they don't get what needs to be done in a, in a correct manner. And that's the frustrating part and that's the part that leads us to put this gigantic burden on the backs of people because we haven't done what we needed to do all along.
Correct. In a word, politics.
Correct. And this, this isn't about politics, this is about what's fair and not fair and what's right and what's not right.
I, I agree with you 100%.
Right.
Thank you. Okay. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
No.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
No.
Councilwoman Mayor?
No.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have three ayes and three noes.
My vote will be to the affirmative.
That changes the vote to four ayes and three noes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Resolution 18-102. It's the 2018 municipal budget resolution. Will the clerk please read R. 18-102 by title?
Municipal budget notice.
Can you go over that again? I missed it.
Municipal budget notice.
Okay. Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Move that this ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law and that a public hearing be held at our, at the council meeting scheduled for...
Yeah, that's okay, it's got to be handled as a ordinance.
He's just saying ordinance instead of resolution, but it's the same.
Council meeting scheduled on April 28th. I'm sorry, 28th, 23rd. 23rd at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
I second.
I have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber, that the resolution slash ordinance type thing is adopted.
Resolution, yeah.
Okay. Actually, that the ordinance is adopted, first reading, published according to law and at a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled meeting, actually not the next, on April 23rd, 7:00 PM Borough Hall.
Right.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Cut and paste the other ones?
No.
Put them in?
No. I have, I have a question. We had our last budget finance committee meeting two weeks ago, right before this meeting, and we discussed the water rates and we came up with the number that Denise and I thought, and I wasn't happy with it. And so I said, with the general fund, can we shake the basket and see what comes out? Because if we're going to have to put a burden on the people with the water and sewer rates, can we do something to alleviate the burden of the increase on the, the general fund? And when we left that meeting to come into here, the last thing we said was that, and that's why, correct me if I'm wrong, that we were going to reach out to all of the council members to speak to their department heads to see if there was anywhere that they could cut the budget that they had requested to alleviate some of the extra increase coming from the, the general fund. So imagine my surprise when I see this because I didn't think we were ready for this yet. I thought we were still trying to, and I know we're in a rush to, to get it out, but I have not heard, gotten any indication that we hadn't tried to shake the basket a little more to see if something could slip out that could save the taxpayers a little money.
Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, you can have other meetings after introduction?
You can, sure.
If you're looking to further pair things?
So, and I spoke to Denise on the phone and I know the auditor was out of town and last week wasn't good for a lot of people. So I, Council President Dixon, are we planning to meet again on this?
I'll have, I'll have another meeting as far as meeting with the, with the department heads, like I said earlier. The difference between last year's budget and this year's budget is 1.4%.
Right.
That is primarily due to salaries and other reasons that Denise said. I do not see where any of the department heads asked for anything ridiculous. And we did cut them and you were present.
Right.
They've asked for additional help, they asked for this, we said, no, 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 not under this budget. So we did already chop that. What they can give back to bring down 1.4%, I have no idea. I've spoken with some of them off the record and they laughed, they really laughed. I mean, they did not ask for things that they would like to have, trying to cooperate.
Right.
And you sat in on those meetings.
Right, right, I know.
I didn't think anybody asked for any, well, some, some, they all wanted help and I'm sorry, we just couldn't give that to them.
No, and you hate, I mean, they all gave excellent presentations, well thought out, you know, I, I understand and it's, it's painful that they feel that they need another employee to say no. However, Councilwoman Revulinski and I were discussing this this morning, perhaps next year, what we should do is find out what our amounts are and then meet with the department heads. Because this year, we met with the department heads, everyone has their wish list and then we didn't know until much later in the process what the actual amounts were that we may be short or where we had a cut or, you know, so we sort of did things first with, okay, you know, this is good and then we might in the future want to go back and know what our figures are before we meet to see, okay, you can have this person, you can have this equipment or, you know, but, you know, it was just one of these things to see with Denise, maybe is there anywhere that we can pare down just a little bit? So I, I, not that, you know, as we said, it's a fairly lean budget, but if we...
I will call for a meeting next week.
That's great.
Not this week because I believe...
I'm out of town.
Oh, well, okay.
Well, before we call, before we call for a meeting or set a meeting, I, I think Councilwoman Mayor and I, we're on the same page with this, that with all council members and the mayor sit down with the respective departments that we represent and try and find ways to shave a few bucks without diminishing the services we provide to the residents. Because it's hard enough to stomach an increase, it's even harder when that increase comes at a loss of services.
Right.
So if there's something that is on the wish list or maybe necessarily not needed this year or monies can come from another location in order to fund it.
Right.
Well, I think we should evaluate those and then each council member presents something back to the finance committee saying, I've spoken with my department and this is what we propose to try and levy the burden. If you got nothing, you got nothing.
Right.
Let's try because we're putting a lot on the taxpayers this year and, and we owe it to them to try our best to lighten that load.
Right, agree. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
No.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
No.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have four ayes and two noes.
So moved. Is there any old business that come before the council decision?
I do, sir. May I?
Absolutely.
Okay. Last Saturday, I attended the Housing and Community Development Committee meeting at North Brunswick, the HUD meeting. Mr. Mayor, I have to tell you, doing that for seven, six, seven years, it was the roughest meeting I've ever went to. They are getting serious, I have the numbers. If we don't spend the $63,000 that we have banked by April 30th, we will lose it. I fought for that $63,000 over the years and I would hate to see us lose all that money. So basically, and just so everyone knows, they don't even have 2018's projection, they just put in, they just filled in last year's number, which was, I think, $31,400 something.
$35,140.
$35...
$35,140?
Yeah. I'll tell you in a second. $35,140. So it's not going to be $35,140 and this budget that you all just approved is counting on at $35,145. So that number's going to be wrong in your budget. That's number one. Number two, we have to contact the HUD people if we want to get our senior citizens any work, whether it's a bus, windows, chairs, whatever it is that's on this list that we haven't done, we need to send them working receipts, working bills, invoices before April 30th or we will lose whatever money is left. They will take it away. What's happening is, every municipality on this list doesn't use the money that they're giving each year. So the federal government is saying, why are we giving Milltown $35,000 when they have $66,000 banked? They don't spend it. We're only gonna give them $5,000.
I guess they don't like the fact that sometimes you like to save money to do something with it.
In a larger scale.
Well, I agree with that, but then you get municipalities that have $400,000 banked.
Yeah, well...
And it doesn't make sense to the federal government. And I gotta tell you...
I would agree. If they gave it to us, trust me, we'd spend it.
It would've been gone.
It was a rough meeting. There's probably about $1.8 million that is allocated to Middlesex County and is not used by different municipalities, with the exception of, I think, three. So Denise, I don't know who goes and advertises for a bus. I don't know how we can do this within the 30-day or 40-days that are left. But if it's a bus that we have to spend the money on, if it's windows, we have to spend it.
Okay. What are we looking to spend it on? That's what I need to know, and then I can get marching orders.
I had brought it up, that they wanted to replace the bus. Now, there was discussion, we may not need the 16-seat bus. Go with the 12-seat bus.
Okay.
And you were supposed to be working on the information for me when I asked you last week.
For Sprint, Sprint's 315.
So can you use that funding to the bus? When it wasn't approved yet? But that was for the 2018 grant.
Uh, yes. So you replaced the two windows in Debbie's office? Yeah. And that was $1,500 minus $6,300.
That's what I'm saying.
$6,3,500-something dollars.
Okay, so a bus is...
That's what they requested. And they said, let's hold off on the windows.
Well, I'd like to know what council's opinion is on whether or not we want to do senior center improvements, senior center transportation, or a senior center buses, all stuff that's allocated over the previous years. But if we wanna use all that money for a bus, I would like the consensus of council to say, the seniors need a bus? Or if the seniors need some work done? I don't know what this council wants to do.
How about a bus and everything?
Councilwoman Lagotti, have we gotten any feedback? And I'm sorry if I'm interrupting anyone. I can't see whose motion is...
That's okay.
Councilwoman... Yes, Councilwoman Revulinski. I met with them, and that was their number-one priority, was replacing the bus. It's about another year, year and a half. You'll have to do it. So it's breaking down. It's rusted on the inside of the bus, and there's other issues with it. And the senior mechanic advised that we go ahead and purchase a bus.
I've actually spoken to one of the drivers...
Is the council basically saying that if we don't spend the money, we're gonna lose that? We're gonna...
That's correct.
...lose out on the opportunity for next year?
Yes, that's right.
That's correct.
So let's spend the money. Let's do it right. It's going towards the group of citizens that the money is initially allocated for, maybe not specifically the project, but at least the group. Let's make all moves necessary to keep things moving forward and try and secure our best advantage for next year.
Right now, I've actually spoken to one of the drivers that drives that bus, and that person said, you know, if you can get a new bus, or a better bus, that'd be a great thing. I know that the seniors want a bus. I mean, I gotta tell you, I didn't fight for those last years to get this money for the federal government to take it back. I really would like to get them something.
How much money pairs to senior center?
Consensus at a council to go for a bus and then see what happens?
I thought we voted on this.
Yeah, we...
You may wanna consider the bus anyway, because it may be your best option for purchase. The approvals to the senior center may require a bid, because it'll be over your 17.5 in order to spend all the money. You have a much better chance of receiving a vehicle through a cooperative or a state contract, which you would still have to approve by resolution to award those contracts, but you wouldn't have to go through the bid process.
Well, all right.
And I'm just saying it's something for your consideration.
So everybody understands, If a bus comes in at $69,582.20, we owe $6,000 to Borough. And that's on us. It's not on any future money or anything like that. That's on us.
Did you deduct the $1,100 for the two windows for Debbie's office?
That came out of the actual operating budget.
Okay, thanks.
I would suggest if a bus comes in less than the money that's allotted in there, if we can sneak in a couple more windows down at the senior center.
Sure, okay.
Also, too, I think Councilwoman Curber said she was gonna reach out to someone in regards to windows, too, if that was at all possible.
That's correct.
So...
So now, somebody sent Mr. Paul Buckley the ordinance that we passed last...
Resolution.
The resolution, I guess.
The grant agreement went with the... I believe you spoke to him too about the amendment to it. But yes, the previously had a public hearing on the CDBG funding, that was sent out with the application for proposed projects for 2018. When we amended it, it was a letter with the resolution was also sent.
All right, I think we need to contact... I forget her name.
I'll send Paul an email tomorrow.
Paul or...
Kathleen.
Kathleen. If you contact them and tell them what you wanna do and how you wanna do it,
Yeah.
they'll tell you exactly what you need to do. And I can't stress that the time factor here is very important.
Any other old business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Last, at the last council meeting, in your mayor comments, you brought up one of our favorite topics, the cutting down and trimming of trees.
Yes, ma'am.
We, I believe that we, I have spoken with you on a couple of occasions to get something on the agenda to address that. And yet, here we are again. And your comments were to charge the council to stop kicking the can down the road and get on trimming and cutting down trees.
Yes.
So I have reached out on several occasions and said, please put something on the agenda, because I'm with you 100% on that. And as Mr. Capella brought up, the fact that we didn't do all our tree work cost us $29,000 on a tree coming down, and we had to fix the power lines. And I'm sure that's just a drop in the bucket compared to all the damage that those trees have caused, and all of the money that it's cost for utility work, DPW work. So I'm wondering why it wasn't on the agenda tonight? Because you charged us to do that. And if it's not gonna be on the agenda, can we discuss it this evening? We have a sum... Can we come up with a sum of money that the council is comfortable with spending to finally start getting to the list of trees that are damaging our power lines and our homes and our cars? And when will that... When can we start to move forward on that?
I had that question posed to the clerk, which she answered. And did you speak to the federal attorney in regards to that question?
We spoke about... What I said was that the council has already authorized the bid, a bid for tree removal and pruning. And that was authorized last year.
Now, what we're talking about is where that money is going to come from.
Oh, where the money is coming from.
So what's the amount of money, Gabriella?
There is no cost estimate right now, because the...
Well, hold on a second. Let's get back to the question. What the councilwoman is looking for is clarification on a council-wide discussion regarding funds that were accepted because of a certain legal situation from the Borough. But we don't know if it can be discussed in public, because we were told it couldn't. Then I asked if it could be put on for an executive, which I was told it couldn't.
Right.
And so, how can the council get together in a room collectively and discuss something that can't be discussed in front of the public? If they say you can't discuss it in an executive session?
That's an interesting question, really. The council would not be able to do that. So the practice typically would be to have a committee of the council meet, and therefore, there's no violation of the Open Public Meetings Act by the committee making or investigating a matter, conducting discussions, and then bringing that back to the council.
Okay, so then my suggestion would be, we already have a Finance Committee. You're a member.
Yeah.
When you guys get together to meet with these, then go through it one more time, get the questions answered, and let's move on.
So...
Wait, 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 wait.
Mr. Mayor?
All right.
I'm sorry. I actually kinda like that everyone kinda calms down when I start speaking. But the... I had to discuss with Councilwoman Mayor today is that one of the issues we have with the existing list of trees is that there is no tree diameter indicated. So I don't wanna burden our utility department or our GPW department anymore to try and go around and measure diameters in order to put together or compile a list such that it can be formatted the way it's normally bid to contractors or tree removal experts for how many of 24-inch diameter or 36-inch diameter or less we're planning on removing. So if everyone wants to chip in here and take a portion of that list, go around and measure, or I think we can expedite this process. I've offered my assistant, Councilwoman Curber, and Miss Mayor, or Councilwoman Mayor and I have discussed, you know, working together to try and measure some of these diameters. But the sooner we get that information put together and formatted into something that's palatable by a contractor to remove those, I think we won't really understand the costs associated. And it's not pertinent to have a discussion on where the funds are gonna come from until we understand where that money, or how much of the monies are gonna be needed to utilize or remove those trees.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Two points. In doing trees previously, three bids, whatever, I'm not sure, a government contract or whatever, you give the list to those companies, they go out and just look at those trees, and they give you the estimates. I don't think we have to do anything. I think they go out and they do it for us. Second thing is, Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
If, correct me if I'm wrong, while discussions were going on on that legal settlement, it was private information, and we couldn't discuss it.
Correct.
Once this council publicly, on a resolution or an ordinance, either one, I'm not sure, accepted that decision and the amount of money, it became public knowledge. People can Oprah that resolution. So why is it not allowed to be discussed by this whole council?
Well, there is a difference. Generally, settlements can remain confidential. And I did look at the terms of this settlement. I was not part of it, as you well know. It does have a confidentiality clause built into it. Now, as a practical matter, many settlement agreements do. And they are to remain confidential. However, Oprah trumps a confidentiality clause. So if an Oprah request comes in, then the records custodian must provide the document, which is the agreement. But that doesn't mean that the council... That doesn't mean that the sanctity of the privilege is dissolved. It just means that for purposes of the Open Public Records Act, and there's case law on it, decisions by government records, council, and Superior Court, that Oprah trumps confidentiality. But it doesn't mean that the agreement is there after a public document for open discussion. In fact, as is built into this agreement and many other agreements, there can be a penalty to whomever discloses terms of it. Again, with the caveat that Oprah always trumps the terms of confidentiality in an agreement.
Thank you, sir.
And so just to follow up, Mayor, with all due respect, the reason that I wanted to speak to all, have all the council members speak to it is because I have been involved in several different committees, and I have heard five different ideas or five different council people coming up with ways to spend a certain amount of money. So we have trees. We have radios. We have lights. We have the old substation. We have what, there's another one. So the Finance Committee could come up with one thing, but then everybody else seems to think, whoa, you know, we have this money, we... You know. So in other words, it seems like everybody thinks it's this endless supply when really it isn't. So that's why we, I wanted to get the opinion of the full council, because one person wants to spend $100,000 on one thing. Another person may wanna spend Another person may want to spend $100,000 on another. And so this has been going on for more than two months, and yet we still have no remedy to if, when, and what we are going to spend from, if we had money to spend from some source that we choose not to speak about.
Right. I would suggest, then, that there's three members of the finance committee, and there's three members of the council that are not. If one of the members that is not speaks to one of the members that is, and then the committee meets, then all of those ideas can be brought together. And let's face it, the recommendation on how those funds are going to be expended are going to come from the finance committee, and with the input of the BACFO.
How about this?
That would be my suggestion.
I got a basketball bracket analogy.
I like it.
You've got three people on the finance committee, and you've got three other people. Let those three other people meet, the three finance committee's people meet, we get a leader for each one of them, and they meet.
Sounds like a winner.
In the final game.
If you guys want to do it, I'm in.
No, no, no. What if I like what Randy and Nick proposed, but I hate what Trina and Ron proposed? And then I'm only left with Dorian as my fifth option? No. I think, I think that sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
Let's figure out the best move for that sum of money, stop kicking it around, and finally make a plan.
Thank you.
I believe strongly in what it was intended for. I think we're on the right path with the tree removal, but if there's someone who's got another suggestion that will serve the residents of this borough better, then I'm all ears, let's hear it.
Okay. Any other old business?
Can I just get some clarification on something? My recollection is on this alternate funding source, is that one of the items that you could use the funds for was electric line tree trimming. I do not believe it says you can do tree removal that do not affect the electric lines. Don't you?
I don't, I don't have the agreement here with me. It's in my office. I don't, I don't, I don't know if you have it with you.
So there is a big difference between doing line trimming and tree removal. So I think that needs to be...
I can get clarification on it. I'll just...
Very good. Any other old business? Any new business to come before the council? Audience comments? Mayor? Mr. Capella?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Been a long night, I know, for you, but I appreciate your time. I want to comment on a couple of different things. My address is 179 Clay Street. Mr. Lagati?
Yes, sir.
Regarding your report for the storm, you left out one entity, and that was the rescue squad. And I don't mean to, I don't mean to correct you, but they really were out with DPW, taking trees out of road and everything else, too. So just...
I left out, I left out the OEM and the rescue squad.
No, you mentioned the OEM.
I apologize. I apologize.
It's okay. It's all good. Can I ask you a question? I don't know who I would direct it to.
Well, you can ask a question, and if a member of the council would like to...
It might be to see a photo.
Okay.
The money you're looking to raise with the water sewer rates, how much does that equate to for that period of time?
Budgets. I believe it's $300,000 this year. So this year...
Over, over two quarters of billing, which is what we would have left by the time this instituted.
Okay. My question is, and again, Ms. Smear, if it has to be raised, isn't there a kinder way to do it over a period of time, as opposed to just boom, throwing it out there? Is that something the council can look at within the budget? Maybe it won't affect the rate payers as much?
Well, the problem here, Mr. Capella, is that we're trying to resolve our debt issue in the course of the terminating 2018. And unfortunately, the only way to do so is to consider that the increase would only result in, result in two billing cycles in 2018. So in all, it's about a $600,000 increase, but given that you're over two billing cycles, it's only $300,000. Once we realize the revenue in order to pay off that debt and right the ship, we will certainly be reevaluating those rates again next year. So they may not be in place for a full year, or they may wind up being reduced, or may wind up, you know, staying in place as they are. So we will reevaluate next year, but through the course of the year of 2018, unfortunately, that's the path we have to take.
Okay. My secondary question is, the $600,000 is going to what? To pay for what this year?
What $600,000, sir?
$300,000.
Where's the $300,000 going for in this billing cycle? What is that going to pay for?
It's roughly the $150,000 that we didn't have last year because of the forced main break that were supposed to come in, and another $150,000, which I believe, and I wish Mr. Stankowitz were there tonight to further describe this, but for the anticipated increase for this year. So we're looking at potential $300,000, $150,000 from last year, and another $150,000 from this year. And the only way to right the ship is to raise it $600,000, which over the course of half a year would be $300,000.
And do we know how much we've spent in the last six months on water mains and electrical repairs that have been, have been done by outside contractors?
I believe the mayor gave you that number.
Yeah, I know it was earlier, but I think that was for the last two years.
Yeah, well, it was actually for the past three. So far in electric, looks like $29,900. Water sewer, $141,808. And one center.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Mayor, that $29,000, I believe, is only for the Friday nor'easter. It doesn't include the repairs that were performed by outside contractors during the really bad one.
These were two for...
Which was lucky enough to, to secure before they shipped out of town. So there may be more coming in.
Okay. So we're spending, would you say, $200,000 on repairs that are not being done by our utility department or our water and sewer department?
It's been about...
Particularly.
About $100,000 here.
Okay.
Wait, wait, now hold it.
No, that's this year.
No, 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 no. On average, okay, well, for '16, '17, and so far in '18, so you're talking 27 months?
Yeah.
$318,000.
So $100,000 a year. Has anybody on council explored the idea of looking at an alternative to having our own service? I mean, we're losing money here. I mean, it's clearly evident we're losing money here in both the water utility and the electric utility? Because if we weren't losing money, we wouldn't have to raise the rates as much as we're looking to raise them now to make up for the difference of...
Agreed, Mr. Capella, but unfortunately, our budget and Denise, perhaps you can answer this, I don't know how many years has been reliant upon about a million-plus dollars from the electrical fund to subsidize our taxes, because we simply don't want to raise the rate on our residents astronomically and taxes. And the idea is to lower the electrical rate and raise the taxes steadily to accommodate for that, because we've seen a reduction in electrical usage. But unfortunately, that, you know, that money, if we were to pay that money, or if the residents were to pay that money, the PSE and G would be gone. Perhaps they'd get better services, but the money, the profits from that would be gone. Whereas in the case of Milltown, it stays here and helps us maintain a budget to try, and I emphasize "try," to move forward and do projects that benefit the community.
I am not here to, in no way, shape, or form to criticize anybody that's up on this staff. I sat there myself, I know what it's like. I'm just here thinking out loud that we're losing money here at a good clip, and there is alternatives out there that need to be explored, and that might be one of them, as far as looking at a utility, coming in and operating our utility, that we still benefit from that operation, but at a different rate. Now, you talked about trees, okay, and money, and where you could get money from. Well, you have people here that do tree trimming. They've been to schools for it. I believe, Mr. Farkas, when you ran the utility as a councilman, I believe that you had the individuals in utilities and public works go out and do line trimming and tree clearing. Am I correct?
At that time, that was done.
Okay. So I would think that Mr. Farkas has a good idea, by utilizing your own personnel, which you would pay overtime for anyway, and at a lower cost, as opposed to not hiring a private contractor to come in and do the trees.
The only problem is, we don't have the staff to do that anymore. At that time, there were people who were better suited to do that type of work. I don't believe we have that staff anymore.
Okay, but is it worth revisiting, though, and looking at? And maybe, I know that some of the public works guys are trained in it.
I did that with Ralph, two years ago. We went as far as to say, what did the shade tree have in their budget? I think it was $14,000. Mr. Capella, I was ready to go and rent him a bucket truck for a month, have his guys come in on Saturdays for a little bit of overtime, some extra money, use up that $14,000, and get more trees. Because in reality, what I had to do was use $14,000 to get 11 trees taken down. Ralph and I had a plan. We could have gotten probably 30 trees taken down if we would have done it the way we wanted to. But unfortunately, with council, I have trees one year, I don't have them the next year, somebody else is, wants to do something else, and it frustrates Ralph and public works. But we did have conversations in doing exactly what you're saying, but yet it falls to the wayside because things change up here.
Okay, so I mean...
I gotta agree 100%. It makes sense for us to do it in-house, but I think the problem is so far beyond our capabilities to take care of that. We need to go outside first in order to then be able to maintain internally. I think we've, you know, the list is now 225 or more trees that need to come down in town, and if you were to take our GPW department and...
I'm not talking about...
Take them off their dairy past.
I'm not talking about them taking the trees down, Mr. Revulinski. I'm talking about them going to trim them away from lines that are in danger of taking the power lines down. Okay? Tree removal could come in later date.
They have been working in-house to do the trimming. They, and it depends on who's, what staff is available. The GPW assists them, they go out and trim the trees, and they have been doing that. And they have a schedule that the utilities director has created, and they do handle it in-house. They haven't been going out. Last year, they did, up, and then June came, July came, they've been doing it mostly in-house. They haven't been doing it externally.
Again, I'm not here to offend anybody or Ted. I'm just here to make suggestions for you to follow through on, maybe save the borough some money. But, you know, the way I look at it from this point, hearing what was presented tonight, you know, the borough should be run like a business.
I agree.
Okay? And I believe Denise tries her hardest, and you guys try your hardest, too, but you're bleeding.
But you know what also?
Uncontrollably bleeding.
I, yeah.
And there's ways that you can do this job by looking to maybe bring entities in that are going to do, do the job for you, and still utilize the resources you have here as well.
Correct.
Just my suggestion.
I think also we need to keep training our staff. We have a lot of new staff members.
How long do they need to be trained? Because I understand that they were hired over a year ago.
Well, no, for like, if you're being a specific job, like tree trimming, you know, they have courses for that. It's a day or two, and you learn all the thought.
Most of Ralph's guys are trained in tree trimming.
I'm just saying, other, yeah, departments that will be helping, or utilities, or the younger staff, so that when we do have people retire that were trained to do this work, that they're stepping up to take it over. But I also worked at, I spoke about shared services with East Brunswick for tree trimming and tree removal, and that did not take, because honestly, they said, well, we're so busy in East Brunswick, thanks for reaching out. But it's possible we can find a shared services with another group of people.
Everybody is busy when it comes to the shared services anymore, because it's the way of the world now. But, you know, like I said, I'm not here to offend anybody. You do a great job, but it's just, I look at things from the outside. You know? So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Phil Zembrano, 40 Van Nuys Avenue. I'll try to keep this short. Regarding the deferred school taxes, what happens if the school district doesn't go up to cap?
If they don't what?
If they don't go to cap.
Then we don't get to utilize the benefit.
Okay, so has anyone checked with the school district whether they're going to cap, or whether they're budgeting, or whatever?
This is Lester. This is last year. We already know you guys went to cap. Not you, I'm sorry, the school board.
Okay. So the water and sewer rates, so you've adopted this tonight, March 26th, but you've known about it how long? Who can answer that question? And these rates going to effect on Sunday?
I think the ordinance says with consumption. Is that what it said to me?
April 1st?
April 1st, consumption.
April 1st, consumption.
Sunday?
Yep.
Okay. A little bit more heads up than March 26th would be appreciated.
We actually, and I think the entire finance committee will agree, we've been going over this, and going over this, and going over this, probably, I don't know, since January, February? And we have been.
So no one, no one before January knew that this problem was coming?
Well, that was, goes to your point, and to what Mr. Capella was asking, it was a question that I asked, too. I mean, we're, we're making up the shortfall in six months rather than the full year, so that makes it even tougher. And I asked, why didn't we do this, or why didn't, I wasn't here, but why wasn't this thought about in November or December, so that you could, we could have spread it out over the full year? But we just had the increase in October, so, you know, I'm not sure why it wasn't foreseen that this would be coming up again this year.
So I sit in the audience, and I see that you agree on your numbers, Councilman Mayor. The BA, you agree with Councilman Mayor's numbers, but then I hear Mr. Revulinski on the phone, and he's got a different number, and then Mr. Stankiewicz has got the same number, but why aren't the four of you all on the same number? That, that bothers me. Who can answer that question? Maybe someone on the phone can answer that question?
I, Denise and I spoke, I don't have an answer.
I don't know, there were number, but there was, as Councilman Mayor...
Believe me, I wasn't, I wasn't happy about it.
Is he still on the phone, or...
I believe he's still on.
Councilman Revulinski, are you still there?
I am. I was cutting in and out a little bit there, somewhat mumbled, but, you know, these numbers, the best I can offer, on what I understood, was that these numbers are not finalized. Things are constantly changing as we evaluate our budget, and, you know, as we continue to meet and go through things, make up the fund balance there with the water and sewer rates, these are what we've come up with, and this hedges our bet for next year that we will meet the requirement for the $300,000 that were short, and, and be there. And, you know, the best we can do is continue to work at those. We don't want to release numbers of astronomical increases, which I know that's a subjective term, but we don't want to release numbers to the general public that aren't necessarily what we need. After running the statistics through our programming software on usage of last year, these numbers should make up the difference and get us on the right track.
That's what you said last year, though. And so 10% last year, I could, I could go with 10% last year. But 30% this year, on top of the 10% last year, that doesn't really work for me, especially when the two people that are here, who discuss the numbers, agree on the numbers, but the two other people who come up with a different number aren't actually at this meeting. So that bothers me. It also bothers me when someone says, you just have to suck it up. I don't want to suck it up. I sucked it up last year, and I don't think it's fair that the residents of this town have to continue to suck it up, and then a year from now, we're going to be sitting here with the 50% increase because we didn't hit our number again. Okay?
Well, Mr. Zembrano, if I may, and I'm sorry that I'm not there to read your body language to determine whether you're finished or not, but, you know, as Councilman Dixon stated earlier, we've seen almost 100% increase since 2010, and have not made up for that. So a combined 40% increase between last year and this year, hopefully will right the ship. And I say hopefully, because we don't know what's going to happen. If everyone decides not to water their water, use their pool, we don't know if the revenue will be generated. That's part of the problem with basing our budget on usage instead of fixed fees of minimum usage, which we've tried to accommodate this year by including the minimum usage of 7,500 gallons in that amount of money.
So, so, so I appreciate that answer. I appreciate that answer, but, so, let's, let's be real. For the last eight years, no increase from New Brunswick was passed along to the residents of Milltown. I know this for a fact, because I called New Brunswick and talked to the gentleman. The rates have gone up an average of 2% to 3% over the last eight years, and no one has had the political will, okay, or the courage to pass that along to help offset the increase that we're dealing with today. So do me a favor, whoever was on council eight years ago, 10 years ago, don't bring them in here and like give them some sort of plaque for such a great job that they did, or name a park after them, because that doesn't help me today, and it doesn't help the residents today. Okay? Every council meeting...
But what I'm saying is that if we instituted those increases...
I'm not finished yet. I'm not finished yet.
And we would have...
I'm not finished yet.
...basically where we are today on rates. It's just, instead of getting away from it from the last eight years, the time has come to, to pay your dues. And I hate to put it bluntly like that, but that's where we are. We didn't pay an increase all these other years. It's come due, and the hard part was saving.
Hey, Councilman, I'm giving you the gavel, hold on.
Oh, sorry about that.
Every council meeting except for this one, I hear Councilman Dixon say, you know, we're $500,000 in arrears, and people walk in and pay their taxes before they pay their electric and utility. You know, seriously, how far are some of these people behind? Three months? Six months?
If I go back a period of time, I said at the last council meeting that...
Are you turning their water off?
Can't turn, can't turn their water off. We can turn their electric off, which we do send them letters. You cannot turn their water off.
Turn their electric off.
We send them letters...
Do something.
And they come in.
Do something.
We do. We're doing it very hard.
Do more.
We're doing a lot harder than what you stand there just talking about it. We're sending letters, we're going to tax sales. Now, I'm talking. We handle the tax sales, we get the money in, and it comes in. Unfortunately, these people don't do nothing until they get the letters from us. There's a certain period of time that you have to, have to abide by them. I think Turney will talk to me about that. We can't just go out tomorrow for somebody that didn't pay a $2 bill last month. We have to give them notice, and have to file it off. As far as water, we're instructed, we cannot shut it off, especially in this weather, because you shut it off, the pipes freeze.
So my final comment is, so you've adopted a, a budget of some sort here, that you're going to vote on in another two weeks, two meetings from now?
Twenty-three hours.
Okay. Do yourself a favor, okay? The way that you're going to get people to come and back what you're doing here is to show the people what you spent last year by putting on a public presentation, here's what we spent last year, here are the budget drivers for this year, this is where we see our money going out the door. This is what we're estimating right now. If you do that, I think you'll have a lot better response from folks. Instead of someone coming up here and getting, you know, pissed off, or lack of a better word than I am right now, put together a public presentation, go through what you spent last year, go through what your, what your budget is on the wall with a PowerPoint, not between you guys throwing numbers around. It doesn't help anyone.
Good night.
Good night, Mr. Revulinski.
Good night.
Anyone else?
Yes. If I can answer that?
Sure.
In speaking with numerous towns that have tried that, it never worked. In seeing what the, and I'm not criticizing anybody, but in seeing what the Board of Education did in this town with their PowerPoint presentation, I opened the information, took it to three different accountants, not related to this borough at all, don't work for this borough, and all three of them said one does not match the other. PowerPoint is, is basically smoke and mirrors. And that's my feelings on that, and I think a lot of the people that work at it at full time agree, a PowerPoint is smoke and mirrors. I can say anything with a PowerPoint. That's my opinion. That's my opinion, which I'm entitled to.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close audience comments and open to council comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
I'll think about it. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. I, I just want to thank everyone there at home who's watching, everyone that's there who took the time after coming to the meeting, for their patience and mutual respect, and allowing me the time to say my piece without interrupting, knowing that I can't necessarily be there tonight. I am currently out of town at a convention, a utility installation convention, looking at the best methods and most economical ways to replace and improve our water system with the least amount of disturbance to the residents. So while I'm not physically there, I am spiritually there, emotionally there, and I am continually working for the residents, and I just want to thank everyone for their patience in dealing with the phone-in calls tonight. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Rich, you do know that we heard the waitress asked for the drink for you, right?
Yeah, but I, I put it on mute when I ordered.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, Mayor's comments? Just a quick comment. I, too, would like to echo the sentiments of the councilmen. Discussing and lively debate about things like town budget, the raising of rates for electric, water, sewer, whatever you're doing, it's good to have a discussion, it's good to have a debate. However, no isn't a better idea, the word no. I appreciate the council, every member of the council, they all do their work, they do it pretty well. My suggestion is... My suggestion is between our introduction tonight and our adoption next time, please, if there's any place you can cut, cut. If there isn't, be honest about it. Come prepared with answers. If you're going to vote no, okay, you're throwing up your hands and saying, I don't have any ideas. Okay? I don't agree with what you're doing, but no. Everybody who ran here, sat down at a debate, and put out literature that said, I can lead you, I can do things better than the guys that were here before me, and I have the answers. Let's see it. Put up, or you know, the other hand. That's all I got. I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
So be it.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Good night. Thanks, Rich.
So bad. I'm like, honey, I'm not even bringing my stuff.